Restez à Saint-Eurtois. Ça va bien maintenant. Maintenant, nous sommes remerciés. Nous remercions le peuple de Yoruba, au Nigéria. Nous remercions le président Talon. Et puis tout Yoruba, au Bénin, à tous les citoyens des Bénins Républics. Nous sommes là aujourd'hui, merci beaucoup président. Monsieur Talon, à tous les citoyens des Bénins Noir Républics. Nous sommes remerciés beaucoup, beaucoup. Monsieur, bravo. Tout ce que vous faites pour nous aujourd'hui là. Parce que si vous dites que vous ne pouvez pas accepter, vous ne pouvez pas défendre, vous ne pouvez pas protéger San Dibo, les jours, les méchants. Gouvernement au Nigéria qui indique qu'il faut attraper, il faut tuer San Dibo. Si vous ne restez, si vous ne parlez pas aujourd'hui là, c'est autre histoire. Mais aujourd'hui, c'est une bonne histoire pour le peuple Yoruba, au Nigéria. Et puis les citoyens des Bénins Républics. Nous sommes remerciés. Les pays Bénins Républics. Tout ce qui vous fait pour le Yoruba, au Nigéria. Merci beaucoup monsieur Talon, à tous les citoyens au Bénin Républic. Merci beaucoup, bravo, bravo, bravo. Merci beaucoup.
Eko lati ati ataro. Moribesen so, lessimo bouk, lessmo beaucoup. Les little Sunday gogo, little sumebo, aloroba. Ah, ataléwe bawaki mogo wan, watikba, ébiamafoli, lide tadi biwade yoba. Alainomafoli ebibo, abakai, éomatu si, lessi po kwa. Yanné pey, akimobe yara, bebe pey, akou i fè, ifò manaya. Ati ode, il était chez Yoruba. Aouni ba beyimutu deyé, pey, irawa, onaniwa, sèri lo som. Tore taba wïsli yoruba, arwi pey, neshé no apu yoruba, yele yele. Lata ripékinio, kamaléri, ojola walo, shubamotu wule, opato, akoloa, yokpara wakuaba. Lashé lido marioba, obatoudawa. Anwalé djuwa, ti, haré ti, wati wanile. Amakoto diwipe, magbi anwalé djuwa, toripe yoruba, monika kyo wo, fenito wabato. Afia skoi, mapwe, papa ekiti. Kaka sorolani, sejuméji, toripe oshèseki, ina, tapi, insoanlu. Eh, kyo sejukwene jira, toripe dizalope, afay yoruba nishalili. Awasou ambi asiliri lu, sumanwosese, kimopada jadé, kasi maso, abekiti. Lani, iséjù, meta sméji. Édupe, wa wenyé, beya beya. Ti, wangbe ngare luni, toripe yoruba neni ya, lashé beni. Nintadè, shulina okwena, ina, ina keba oboma koto jire, keba wansolo. Lani, sejumano, toripe yanwalé djuwa, amagnoa shuretu. Tore yésho yébita batin solawo, ki networking, itabiki, moutabikiaka. Toripe yolo fèu, osindabe. Abekiti, awani, adari, eli tuma daddy yoruba, homebase media. Loaloba itama si, xiamá. Adosipawo, uwa laniwa, asimaché meeting, little baby woba lakbo long. Enyawa, ebawa for shopwo. Adupe, lowe eintiè, nawo, ifè siman luni, meyakosa samura, okigbe, apuyoni be, bashidwa, abekiti. Oh ya, edaun.
Eche baba me, moki, eyi baba miyate, yame. Eche, ekwa atile yoruba. Guéyitè diotitoumou, guéyitè fejola feina yoruba. Eche, adètukouli, boko wala jony olili nasa. Hmm, omote tutu jadé leni. Ekane no awa, xiyori. Ati oye, ekà. Kyoli shalay, machelle, tita madi leli riwan. Atukalowa, gobe yitè yewa silini. Atibobe yitè apiché, ichetanxi. Alor ma akman yili, ojouni tini. Awanu, oniganyé kule. Oduduta, dogbedani, onigaboloa wa. Ah, nijora waluju, esigè kwa atile yewa. Adéfia koko idupalowa babawa. Professeur Banji Akito ye. Eh, yinludua wulo wo. Komashi, mokwa atile yewa. Adukwa toripe wanè, na riri, mòjola yoruba. Atidukalowa, baom. Todurogekebi alatile yi. Oloye shifande bo, maga solawa. Okolopawato waliado. Mo amo, kolokoi shélibribi. Tioleye go, oshila anewa. Mousé spéchela wata wali. Ningba taba doli, ekoli tapwe, ofè rewa. Ofè soua, atufonwa, kese dadi sitakwe, ah. Emma jebe. Wankia lâché yo, alâché yowo, pekouli. Alâché yorina manki kouli. Emma josua, adjola walandja. Edemadé jagbagwe pekiché pou, ololoye go oni. Kiché motolo wa, kiché leluwa. Tibo fejola, oh, boko amayoruba. Atukalowa, wofa atile yi. Atibokwé, ni pata. Tèso wipé, oris yoruba, obedo souké kama. Oris yoruba, obedo be. Atukalowa yi, mousé espèciali. Yoruba World Media, ekoli reni, otipetèti lo nyu. Eh, wabi omotutuleni, is part of achievement. Pe. Ada odona, alorontile yi. Kiché, kiché mimansiwá. Mikoshi atile yonolon, aké yon yoruba world media. Adosipawo, onibaje. Odusunwa, na tā, odusunpe, ni odoka manas, yana souké. Moba ladwa pe, boko akpata pata pata tati manbere. Eni adoyi, amamou kwe. Enayoruba, odeni, fiposi sonri fwa. Ekusha, nibatu wo, atibati owo. Libelé wipé. Olianikèlito ba fe. Lélé fù Jerusalem, only yoshiri. Bobo wala bagbo, wipé Jerusalem, titualele yoruba. Bobo wala deba, gobe peti yoruba, basi wani nona jilia. Kadbagbe ogó, kadbagwe pey, afè be, ayé don. Toba, toripe edite. Aloron mama, chenini o welu. Siola, akolapalé o, lebodusita. Tsubobo gôtoni lofin sopotepe. Ani oris yoruba, bedo fonpada. Aloron mama tiyle yi. Ojouni tiniyo, isé dalé yoruba, magbe gobe yé, pata 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 pata. Até interwo, ah, me yé, okolopaweni, yata ma kwenye. Oké, yon lota, walo, ni bitawa. Wani zawi pey, awansu lawa, wade dawalo. Alorona fôrere, avèsafung boko yé, kwa da kwa da. Eh, ne woty. Eh, ni xéro wo, gobe yitè nlepa. Pe, inayoruba bedo bo, ni no kuku, no kuku lawa. No kuku blim blim. Pe, imale yoruba bedo topada. We are the giant of Africa, the light of Africa. Aloron ma, yélowa, eche go, God bless you sa.
Eche, yani, ekou lati ataro. Ah, oludari, yoruba homebase media, onanwati soloi. Butanbeluni, owo te bauti to, todi morda wabawo. Eh, oluguluwa, wati tasi. Eh, wabawo, moses, abionuna, awanoti ba ndasi oni, muniyon mube kale. Emobélabati sitilo, eh, emafi akatinabaye. Elde pey, owaluka, owaluka demo wogba tiè. Awate golo, luni topo. Edi seyeka losbitoui, makakope. Ah, anwalé djuwa, towa nibi, bati yajoma, basi yawa, matelaya tiba ba. Babawa, professeur, oluguluwa, nena, kotsima akope. Ah, ibére mi, sado yini wipé. Edje kaboroyi, mofé kebami wu. Odumé jini, ti. Wati moului san debo. Si luku tonu. Ti kutonu, si se tiwa sidaboko. Kekebi, ni tiwa ribé, eni tiera o, bodore. Afodusunu ko, oleye filiwo. Odumé jion, sibita wansé. Afodusunu ko, laye yiri. Lani, odumé jion, sibita wansé. Intonchele, dibatama vaskoi, mofinki, babawa, alagbala, toinjagbenusukwa babawa. Professeur Banji Akito ye, makabo, si anewa. Eh, awali akonopé, amangbatini teteriwa. Baba, oluguluwa, wekè bonsoke.
Ya, oké. Oké gobe yé, babamétimo wovi by, atenyé yame, nilé, loco, atini gobe yébi. Ah, morimepe, odupé, esé depéle. Ah, afi akoko idupalowa, orofun, olofe ati, infinity, ani. Toripe kosontole waye, piko shené kwa olofe ati, anoloru. Oké gobe yé, yame, timini, morimari daroko gobe intan, ateni babami. Yawa, ajia kui, ah, Dr Sabi, omobori owo, babà, ah, alagbala. Ati, eh, yame, loco kanti, ejeje. Oké, babale kiti, ekwa ati yoréni. Alagolo yipwa, ba, lolo fisi, edèkwe, imbe la golo long. Belogo long, ah, anifé shawati, nini yoruba nation. Belogo long, boba tawambi by now, kose nikeninwa tama fì shawati. Boko wa, lolo ma, okode, ilé liri, lagolo long. Ya. Inajò, two years ye, inajò to, Tony Agbarani. My brother, White Lion, Koiki, eche gani. Ah, edemepe yanjoye, yanjò, Tony Agbarani. Bang, onamidmati wòra mi, edu na. Oké, mutigètikotonchele. Inajò Tony Agbarani, lopolopo. Ah, ojono ribiano. Che, evaki bere, nibiti ati bere, yoruba nationi, abi ekofèké, soron.
Eka soro, toripe, isé yudmano, na mofè fè. Ki, oké, yonbanwati apé, tobato aséku.
Then, oké. Well, so far so good, adukalowa, alonunfun, ah, not yolo fe. Ah, like I said, kose niken torokon, balo alon, because you pantatififun, that you. Moudoupe, lawalon, adèkibabawa, miracle, ah, miracle of the land. That is a babawa, miracle of Yoruba land. Babawa, professor Banji Akito ye. And, and also, to, oloye furoan, eh, babà, babato du babalo, babaga. Itu, tualon, kaos oké zéro, babavetik, kaos oké, akwa, akwa. Profet wa wabi, oje biyavò, garage, but never did less. Obofun babà, lekonsi. Ah, babà, doctor, ah, oloye, ah, ibo osha, babà. Ah, alorantè, miyisi, ekwefun alagolo long. Ah, that's the attitude, mounsi, kotonui, armepe. Eminba gokini kongbo, mude masson boko ba. Kose nito gmondolo. Kude singo kota le, rishi, lenyo lolo, alonolo tumakon. Boko akoko tolo, fionsi benye, only, bibeli ganso, nikuani tibi. So, there's a reason, tolo, before, famosi benye, alonofuwa famosi benye. Kiché koubya, oni komi dochele. Bongo, chele, gobe luyi, olon. Oh ya, kani babà, kani gotochele, lojé, kani koochele. Ibitu onlo, ah, mokati bati chele, zo mbé. Ah, mokati bati chele. Mokabon, odeni, wipé, alorun moi itwe, oden moi itkenu, atin koto she. Ah, n慕de masso, kini kom, kani gomoto chele, nini yoruba nisho, kani koochele ni. Ah, ni morawa bele yi. Ni si, ojé kadiwa morawa, ojé kama rion tajé. Ojé kama, ojé kari ojù boko, kolopaweni. Because tele tele, boko wala kodi, alan gata danu dele. Ah, omo, inu onikalu kua. Tumolo jeni si, ati lugu boge chele. Adètimo, amoyi, ati odikalu kuko. Adèmoryo, torikalu kujé, nino struggle, nini yoruba nationi. And, mafi, akoko isolo diè, nigati yoruba nation, she berè. That's, ati be yoruba nation, 2019, not, not 2020, lache berè. 2019, yoruba nation, tibère, 30 muni, okon eji, ikon eji. 2020, dudèkwe, eche go, jué sita diè, tigo, eche be si, yuri dada. Ah, adèkwe, nipita ati berè, ati bita badi, mazoba, emyo sa, oni yoruba nation. Ado berè ni, ado berè from grassroots go oni. Kibwa muda onu be, somomo it, momo much, momo dada, nipo yoruba nation. And oloye, nigati, oroi berè. Alwaye go, espe gopé, oroi goma ribai. Igbati, awionde lekwa, wopé, babà, inkoba inkoba la, gbe lowo. Inkoba inkoba la, defè koochele. Ah, inu adupé, oloye fo, towa tèse, nokfa amorambaye. Si, onde berè, she, yé, babà, no, ado berè, no, ni kusinko kota berè, yé, babà. Yolo ye go, angotu bo, kolan, koto tu bo, fwa agoni spirit ye, we no. Ah, inkote, inkote, wata ebà, so you, inkoto lagba rani. Tore ino de fyo, what they say, no sing by. The white lion, nom, big kudos to him. Because Igbayen, aduani oye, odua action movement. Yes, Igbayen, kuti si, mòting by. Moveré kwe, the first rally, tama koshéni, ile karu jiri. Eh, mbera kwe, myomoki kere tumu ba, soron, inoni, alonunlou, bainla, timu, idea yewa. That was in June 12. Tashi radyeni, ondo, ondo town, ani, eh, ibadon. Shubon byen, one, one disturb, one, rally, she, ni June 12, ni 2020 ye. Timwai dyan, wabè, wamua, ni oye, mubaya. Ah, otumbademala Edward, was a coordinator of Oye Mubaya. Then, ah, awan yé, akokonwa, people, tawakwe, wa nonba ye. Then, ah, ah, kilo lukonwa, Awikoko, was one of them. One was, one of us, ndan ye, that was then, he was one of us that time. So, bata radyen, she ni 2000, ni akoko, ni June 12 ye. But I should twa project to see October 1st. That's my guy, yéwa kwe, edeka she, rally, October 1st. Goba onyolovestin, some by kimi tomorrow, October 1st rally, tava she, gakwa wokon. Awon yonprisa, awon yosorongba, kolopamoyon data. One, accepte, la deka she, rally. Eh, mekra diye, olo be wasita, October 1st rally. Eh, mekwe, tebalo, wofidiyo twa she, niwajuli babà, ni sokan by. Eh, roto bademala Edward, onlo maski ba, onodo sektor, orodo sektor. Olo ye inga ye, topi, topi kaspishinbe, niwajuli wanba ye, ni 2020. And, happened to be that one of my brother, ah, Koiki, owa kwe, lwa ba ye. I don't know, she, kudu, kudu majinon ba ye. And the first rally, tama komashenida, sporan ba, emimo lidè, ni Atlanta Georgia. What do CNN, emimo kaspishinbe, lojonye, ni October, October 1st, not Atlanta Georgia. So, and lati byen, pashe berè niye. Dudèkwe, oku dekà, oku dekà, demu, ni maji maji tashubon. Okwa, atuwa beni wipé, babadje, anyto ekwe, otu bo, fwa ni spirit. Yolo ye, olo ye, olen to, to bo, fani spirit, otu bo, jia spirit wa gongiti. Chou de kore anybody, babi tova fe ra, awon yonba mi. Olo ya, atu pouin, atu poui, konseku no, obo re anybody, ebi, white lion, je solèkon. I'm yo kolopoi, dakté, kwe, elomi atèfè, we draw. Betwa bati yekini, atu jia spirit wa hoff. Then, and at the same time, Igbati, ah, Koiki. To just, ah, oloye, otu wa, wajèkote kwe, otu wa, oan towa de kishé, yé, koto bo ro. Because, ni byen, a lot of things, inba, tiba ba go, teni fè she. Olo ye, Koiki, dova toso ba, ba, no, babayeka kashiba, babayeka kashikibai. Otu bo, put one true bo byen. So, nino struggle, and that's the thunder, to, to see, ah, kotonu. Eh, mekwe, irewesi, efè wadiye, shuban at the same time. Sherry, you continue, believe, tell me more, wipé. What will be, will be, no matter how it may be. Oh, it doesn't matter, ah, whom you are, or what you have, or who, eh, your personalities. It doesn't matter what you decide, determine to do. Igbatomo, noye, okolopolo, loya, loya dan. Momu, bata omu, yesu no, okolopono, yesu, pekite, ah, Mori, opita, gosè, kemi ote, Mori. Shubasi pe, stipe, awakon duro. Shuban leni, eh, won't say, atu, ati duro. Boko te, koto she, yes, niguwa, wata, tawakwe, libabai. And babà, professor Banji Akito ye, inbata mekwe, inkotan, babà, ekidani. Eh, koto, tojotoni, toni tumo. Eh, adukalowa, long wipé, bobo ati, adro tiba, baban byen. Odua, ashikwe, esanode, ashikwe, noleni. Shuban keni konmouni wipé, no, tala ariwà, atina otu dalé. Atina otu shubun, atina otu lo. It happens like that in everywhere and everything, ni bye mi. But, adukalwa, long, kwa, atashi dro. Tono de, fandoro fe, lati dro, nino struggle. Igbata, shirali, ala berali. Tavesti nosi, ah, koto, tavesti nosi, bené républic. Alosti bené républic, kimi by, talon shirali be, nino ju. That's the jacky, wori ni, Igbati, the first rada, koloshe, inba. I think emati, ah, debutime be, that's mega rally. Alaloshe, ralingbatan, shibuku etan, dono ju, nino ju, kaki ri, talon byen. That was a day, taloshe rali ni, taloshe rali ni, taloshe rali ni, bené républic. Okwe walo, awalelo joi, emati, ah, debutime be, oku awale, wamba sa, one or two things, inba. Igbakwa, okonkoba, jassun, towa, o, towa secret, better, never delays. Ah, dro, ah, de jawo, alon de fwa, she, atolosi France Embassy, aloshe rali be. We've been to Benet Public times that number, taloshe rali be. Aloshe Kenya non, times that number, taloshe rali non be. Ati, ati France Embassy. And during this time, I'm, yà, I want continue, at, go through, ta, ta, rito chele. Atama approach, donfo wa. During that time, no, na, woi, joba ilinnot, onkwe mi. Eh, kwe, malé jawo, nino yoruba nation, one that he said to me, one that he from me, say ni to, ticket. He wanted that, go from me, jekba, kantawo kon. Shubon, modye konrela, to wipé, anytoba ti dalé, nino wa, koni dalé. So, entwade madale, koni dalé, emyo, kekebe yonkon. I'm not that type, I'm not so cheap, tele furo. So, adukalwa, alon wipé, alon falo, ofe di akutawa. Edemepe, nino struggle, ose nikeninu boko wa. Atentoshe berè, atentoshe join wa, lano. Atentoshe jwani geta, atentoti join, that's 2019, that's a berè. Ose kokoninwa, ali foro, to say, because kalkunolo, niro to play. And niro to kalku dey play, owa yvéti, tade mekwe, kalukun, shidada. So, boko akapata, lanchéché, bi, owo washeri, bi, kawa sheri, mouché zan, yefè, mè kolekón. Ikato kere ju, ele to solaju, ele to gundju, boko awa, ika. Icheti kalukon, oshi, ototoni, but they all work together, that is, she bako. So, adukalwa, alonunfun, ore ofe, atan, etan ileni. And, back on off, si, nino struggle, you know, dey ni, boko, koto shéle, noto fin shéle. Ati awa, inyo wa, most especially, our media. In fact, tabanikama soro, tabanikasutoro. Emi, kekebe yonkon, tabanikasutoro. Big kudos to media, because, tova sita, media ni, a lot of things, to wixéle, nabya shop. Was anybody tea bag, box, was anybody tea bag, more anything. Osi, but, alonunra, omedia lo, work, big boko, we sheti, tiwanshi. And, koda towa dipe, alonun, shede bita, wata dey mepe. Lashé yorili, lolo mashe shé. Shé, we, a lot of things is going on that, ta, anile so, ni gba ba. Adukalwa, alonun, eche gani, thank you so much.
Eche gbo veri, timbani kima masolo, eh, aman afayye kétu, yafe yé kujé, ntiwa, afekia, wati akwe. Toripe, okolokwa, oman ya, onuwa wabà, sétè luni. Si, mouna si bolo soro, sejumano, manu, luri intonchele, ati, nti, ashe luni. Madadakpada, siodo, allayomi Koiki, afi kwa mekwe, anwalé djuwa, ni tubatuka, so yoba soro.
Ah, aki, ah, babawa prophets, olugu, bulua. Moki boba won, tenyawati, otiwoli. And upé fun, ah, president Patrick Stallone. Si, afi, oké fun, nitorikwe, ti abanika wu, yibo adjoini. Hmm, inyafe, edema, toubiri kwe, tha olusi washéle. Leinba ti abaka, nineteen days before, adjoini, toripe. Ah, tabani kawo calculation. Based on timing. July 1st, ni walo ataki, ilé babawa, oloye, doctor Sunday. Adi yemo, tibu wamosi, Sunday. Nineteen days after. Si ba bape kuru, nino beni. Ni, otu da woduru, eh, bo asin, dupe noni, opwe no dey ni, amama dunin, boko ba. Eh, ede kwa no be, kingpe, lara woty, omani, oroméji meta, ti, oma fibawa, she, iguyu, dworo. Toripe, okpokowa, ah, more, intonchele, missale. Nitorikwe, ah, tabanika wu, from the diplomatic side of situation. Ni batibu boron, yé, tonlo, tonbo. Edé kinkwe, spokesperson, fumba babà, professor de Banji Akito ye. Toripe, ahm. Opolopolo, laan yoru. Ti shoko, ti kuru lara, prior to that, nipà, bewamu, eh, walo ataki le CSI. Ni 1st of July. Eh, babawa, gani alagbala, tabanika wu, wojoini. Kilo clear, tongon, nitorikwe, tabanika wuti, elé yaki diwa. Ti, ishe leshtiu, elé, ino toufè, savasé kwe, oshéle noni. But for reason known, akobope, odi de nandjilia. Amontsi babawa, oloye ni, kilo detou, yato. She, ah, lesopé, ewukuru ni nouèni. Ah. Moki babawa, awan tiwa wa, luri etupenwa, babawa, akonja. Akbémisò, babawa, akito ye. Eh, edéki, akpara, sodò, nitorikwe, oye, etukokwa asoro. Atuketu babawa, olo guluwa, wati babawa soro. Mama wa yé yé, tony, olao ye, Emma Akbaradi fua, mama wa, onuri ekou. Babawa pastor, oké, be onukosi. La la woty akwe kwe, awakola fe soronemi. Afé biri, lawa woyo, ogu ba kwe. What clear out, tongon, kilo shéle. Si, yato fi jet, siti babawa, oloye, kye, yoruba, yé, noni, abibau. Babami, kani, alagbala, egomidada. Ebawa nonibe, ebawa shala, etu boko amayoruba. Tombe nini, tombe loko, kilo shéle, tongon, siti babawa, oye, firi be.
Eche, ah, white lion. But before I can to, everybody, kinder to, you know. Into berè, sini, shalay. I think there's a particular area you want me to talk about. But somehow intervention, odekinko, okon gokwe kilo shéle, tito luyé fia to. Can you please, within thirty seconds?
Eh, iti, mofé berè, ni kwe, nigati, oloye ti, agbke, wadawonduru, si loupèné républic. Kilodetiti wanshè, dikwe wokou, wobè, lassi, abuja. Emakwe, si, eyake diwa, akoboni, anri owo, sokonkwe, odi de nandjilia. But si, oloye ribè, kilo le shéle, tongon, la animeji. Kilo clear between the two countries, toripe beni. Ofe to legal state, kodak, ofe to state me, amon, kilo shéle, kilali so, clear out, la animeji.
Eche, now I'm very clear. Ahm, akokomoki, alone. Obato, si, yé, si le, oda wuwa, sheng, gomidada.
Badbo yisah.
Olu ashe, ah, obato fore, oda wuwa yé. To yorô, ino kon. Ni, ah, the southwest. Ibitia, woi, but on the market, okweni Nigeria, in nineteen forty or so. Ah, alon, tida yoruba, si be. Odeti moko, mada yoruba. Wa ki, gobo amoyoruba, noni le loko, lenyudi. Igogo be totingbowa. Ugo, awanti kiki tossi, o, o, everybody. Ahm, lato ya, won, ji onli di struggle, babaki to ye, bye go. And most of other, wadaki kimi kwa da, sodwa, on media. Ahm, anyti yoba ye, ki, 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 batossi, kenyokiwon. Eh, okolopoyon, ojalu struggle, lani. Abito kori, pe, one, bo, wi, bi, yon, nonba, obi. Ahm, yoba city media, bi, alaba, oluguluwa, je solèkon. Eh, okolokonkon, Obama. Obama, jadju awo yonludju. Abi konosawo yon, to boshé honto. Apa loki okun, atinile papa. Eh, asoi pe, kampi wanili, kampi wanili. Ose pe kampi wanili ni udà. You see, tioban she, rally, tiolo ye she. To bring it to limelight. Nigerian government, ti gaga, on media, to wanli. Devi kubuwa, kiti yon, ati orotanso. Wantifoni, ofi pe, godosso. So, bio basherini, abroad noni, eh, bashi busy, tiobashi gobe yé. Ah, kudos to you all. Lati batati berè. Ahm, ojoti, eroti luni, July 20th. Egebe, eh, brother, amyolagi, yomi Koiki, she so. Ericishele, eh, shelyo, jome jini. Ahm, akokono, shenkota, espètini, beni. Shenkota, tiboni, beni. Especially three days to the time, on the twen, on the first ye. Eh, awon gokwa, tamafi, pamosabi asho, shubawa, gwa, won kokon. Eh, awakwe oloye, because I have to mention that. Kamwe yonlimo, yuru yon toje. Okwe, si conference, on, waninko, bye, 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 bye. We, awa oké, awa kon oké, but legally, kwe, yé, koli shibe. Ogonkotima, yé, she, kosi si, to, tolo disofi. Itoto, entoba wa, ni joba. Nifeki, river go, bank, okolo won. Especially to ban benefit in way. However, orodanso, yé, noti jodori koko. So, onata dembe ba, edje ba mute, and obam interfere. Onata dembe ba. It's a peaceful mean, it's our right, lati. She but, imagine, can leave anything to chance.
Uh, you okay, I want to move. Um, I be on, is it I be on Taiwo?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, 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 may God bless her. Yes. So, we go on, yeah, I okay, I want look. One day look, I'm more call the good one to look on the third year. But most of so far, I feel Louie Bo in sixty, this is umawa. So, they ban sorrow, can maintain sorrow. I want on sorrow, need time here. Eh, do over when he want food. I want will learn on share. If you don't come back, yes, she let on fire, maybe. Today, to insist, they say, oh, Laura Lee, yeah, for my Yoruba. Look, do go here. Eh, eh, to I want point here, so the man saw, I want to on sorry, eh, eh, on, 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 she any, oh, she chef any, call me, I come out, okay. What are these people talking about? At what point? No, I believe in a she chef, anyway, fast forward. I believe in a communicate. They could on. They not really tell anybody much plan. But Yawawa. Our fast forward, see, I like, just in, oh, yeah, she, no. Eh, one funny story that I must tell. I think, yeah, I got it, Tony. Oh, funny, but, oh, for what, oh, funny, eh, any console.
Ni biobashi wani nuini, ge ge biyododo, ge ou tito, uni kefi maso. Because oroi jile oroi mule. Uni oroteen so botale mu, o de ha fe to kolokonon. So eshi modupe, ojoni tinu, modupe pefumi niya fani, latisoro nirole. To ria idonomi, belua ba majasolamolo sari wegeleini, mi oruti tele.
Eshe wuda, eshe wuda.
Ope askoi, mufiki ma mawao loryoko, somambé, ni kalekuluwa, edekin tunda. Oroi pada, si, baba bakaishaname, baba kai. I, edekitoua, basi, edeki, mister kuiki, kiwatu benetuka, meka bawafi de france. Kambawa fi, somoro, de de koua si kale. Ah. Play me kuiki, oh ya.
Oh, ka itoua, loryoko, edeka kwe, baba kai, kaba kwe, niti okon. Oni keba asobi, va possible, niye de francese, frequent, e de mete tanani afi communication, ni, a shalé. Akimbo boite wa loryoko, akimbo boi ni, presidency, world media ti noule, ati, awati o media. Akimbo boi ni tiati wa lory bo bo platform, inele ngon si, amajé, twentieth of July, twenty twenty three. What are we doing? We are looking back to the day Dr. Chief Sunday Boo was stopped at Benar Republic. Two years today with different kind of rumors. And some of those rumors, we've been clarifying them tonight. But let's go back again, uh, to Baba Baka, latiso aso de francese, latiso be the next person, eshigoni.
Onela encore. Eh. Aujourd'hui, savait le fait, le monde, jumeau de Dieu, deux-mille-neuf-vingt-trois, il est presque deux années quand les, ils sont attaqués ou bloqués, tu vous sent debout quand il est prêt, quand il est prêt pour aller au pays, à Canada. Parce que comme dit, comme Dieu dit tout à l'heure là, les présidents, on Nigeria, ils sont cherchés, Monsieur Chandebo, à cause, l'émission, ce qu'est l'émission? Parce que il a demandé protection, le peuple de Yoruba, à cause de ça. C'est pour ça, le gouvernement de Nigeria, il le suivre, pour attaquer, pour tuer Sandebo. Les premiers mois de Dieu là, ils sont attaqués, la maison, de, tu vous sent debout, même, ils sont tiers des personnes. Ils sont attaqués, ils sont rattrapés, douze personnes, ils sont ramenés, la capitale, Abuja. Punition, frapper, malitition. Il faut tout ça là, on n'a rien dit. Parce que tout ce qui on a demandé, c'est les droits. C'est pas obligatoire, fait que les tribes Yoruba restent au Nigeria. C'est pas la force, c'est pas un mariage, on ne peut pas, diffoser, on peut diffoser, si un mariage, s'il y a pas implicaire dans le mariage, il y a les droits pour aller ailleurs, ça capa. Mais, ce qui dit expliquer tout à l'heure là, ils sont attaqués, le président, le monsieur qui vous sent debout à les report, quand il va aller au Canada. Mais, le gouvernement, les citoyens, Benar Republic, ils sont, protégés, ils sont défendus que, qui vous sent debout, ce qui y est appris, c'est les récits. C'est très très important, si il y a un tribe qui sont maltraités, on a les droits pour lui que, on va, on va sortir dans le pays qui s'appelle Nigeria. C'est ça qui Sandebo, il a demandé, parce que il y a beaucoup de, il y a beaucoup de Yoruba, ils sont tiers. Que le, 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 le région de, eh, le, le région du nord, il fait attraper, il faut prendre la terre qui le Dieu nous donne, le peuple de Yoruba. Il faut beaucoup de sources, comment il faut attraper la terre de Yoruba. Mais on a dit que, on ne peut pas laisser la terre qui le Dieu nous donne, les Yoruba. Il y en a eu beaucoup de légion, c'est parce que vous sentez beau seulement. Il y a le président, on a eu les professeurs, Bangia Kitoi, avec son collègue, qui sont dirigé les, les missions, comment les gens, comment les gens de peuple Yoruba, il va sortir dans le pays qui s'appelle Nigeria. On a eu beaucoup de activistes, on a eu les gens qui sont encouragés, et fait que, je fais dire, je vais défendre le peuple, je vais défendre le peuple qui s'appelle Yoruba. Depuis quand il y a les problèmes, il a commencé, ils font beaucoup de choses. Plusieurs fois, le gouvernement Nigeria, il négocie, afin que le gouvernement Benar Republic, comment il va laisser Sandebo pour rattraper ou bien pour ramener au pays qui s'appelle Nigeria, pour aller faire quoi? Pour faire les punitions, ou bien soit pour tuer, on savait, mais, le président, afin que les citoyens de Benar Republic sont dit que non, on ne peut pas laisser Sandebo dans la main de gouvernement de Nigeria. Il faut que on va protéger, on va que on va assurer, on va défendre, parce que tout ce que Sandebo, il amène dans, dans, ce qui là, ce qui là fait, c'est les droits. C'est très très important, c'est pas, c'est pas Yoruba qui va faire un truc comme ça là. Nous sommes, c'est pas, c'est pas que nous sommes le premier pays ou belle tribes qui va demander independence pour son, eh, pour son peuple. Il y a beaucoup de, il y a beaucoup de les tribes qui sont séparées avec le autres. C'est, c'est, c'est la même source qui nous Yoruba aussi, on nous Yoruba aussi, on demandait. Que nous Yoruba, on va y aller, on va quitter, on va rester comme un pays. Nous, le Dieu nous donne tous. Que ce qui dit, le Dieu il nous donne tous pour rester, pour s'appeler l'indipendance, ou bien soit, les territoires qui valéquent les, les pays de Yoruba. Comme on le dit, Yoruba mission, Yoruba mission. Mais, ce que je veux dire, comme Dieu dit tout à l'heure là, tout le temps, tout le temps, on a rémission, le président Talon, tout ce qui nous fait pour le peuple de Yoruba, ce qui nous fait pour le professeur, avec son collie, tout ce que le président Talon, il a fait. Pour Sandebo, il a protégé, il a assuré, il a défendu que, il y a aucun souci qui va tomber sous les, les dirigeants, ou bien soit, qui vous sent debout, le président Talon, il a resté que, je fais défendre Sandebo. Il y a aucun souci, nous, le président, il n'est pas pas né, c'est, le tu vous sent debout. Dans le, dans le, dans le gouvernement Nigeria, non, il faut que il protége. Eshe, mafai. Nous, tout le temps, tout le temps, on a rémission, le peuple de Yoruba. Nous rémission, le peuple, le président, Monsieur Talon, merci beaucoup, eh. Bravo, bravo, bravo.
Je crois chez tonne.
Oui, on va rejoindre souvent, eh, ni suru, ah kai, mafai, mafai de la mi, obviously, yes, yes, et il est au corner. Obviously.
Monia fi, éminence, eh, ni monia fi, la papa, non.
Oui, eh, oui, eh, mafai, eh, oui, eh, mafai, eh, ouais, ouais, la vie de suite, eh, oui, eh, mafai, eh, ni. Oh, tu vas me la papa, eh. Ah, ja, kuja, for, oh, eh, c'est vrai, oui, c'est lily, ah, ja, kuja là, ah, on a, c'est vrai, eh, okay. Last my prayer, last my prayer, only that's quick, eh, la do one with me, intention, eh, one ball, bobo da da. So, ah, Moses, I. What is my baby? I'm a wife, ah, okay. I'm a wife. Esche opo.
Esche, moki, eh, esche, oh, baba, mokoli, oh. Ati, oh, so, so, toa lory koni, oh, ati, no, eh, ati, no, eh, eh. Esche gon. Ah, greggy be. I'm with me, eh, copa.
That device, maybe, eh, maybe. You know, maybe. I, eh, eh. Yeah, oh yeah, continue.
Esche, mosa. Ah, greggy be, ah, kaka, country, Bakesi, Wasi, yeah, Irua Wai. But le diapé, odawalo jumba kori, eh, Yoruba Nation, ne solution for Yoruba. Um, si be, be majority, awa mo Yoruba, nele loco, ni bogo bitawa, ashe opé, Yoruba si beni ja. To look out, um, down, not here, oh. That's what some of us, because he most of us, majority of us, takon, I need, be, be, eh. So, but le diapé, I think we struggle here from afar off, koto shele, see, oh, no, eh. Cause it may not be, but you, money to all, eh, I mean, on a different topic, and I've spoken about it for a while. But, he became morning daring to my heart. That he, after answers, at our interviews, koto she, she have focus in learning by answers. Our interviews, koto she, before key Yoruba Nation, koto, koto, key, eh, Yoruba Nation Movement, koto et wa, block, oh, no, diaki, awa, kabo. Oh, no, eh, Sunday, adi ama, bo, no diaki, Irua me, king ba bo, even then, then, ba tiak ba bo, eh. This is what we have all known, cause you are Yoruba, to ria, eh. Si kumope, Yoruba Nation, eh, peka kro, ni non, Idré, ne, ne ona, bayo, oh, il osiwa, diwa. Suban, a lot of us, I tell you, eh, eh, I tell you, eh, eh. I get my battle, eh, Yoruba, she, Dasi. No, diaki, eh, me fedah. Suban, some of us are convicted and believed was because of the characters of this man. Chief Sunday, Ibu, who enter but he monitored, had to watch it from the start. And I remember clearly where I was in on vacation with my family in Cancun. Uh, actually, before going to Cancun, when he was attacked, or I'm looking like Texas. I was furtively hoping that he was safe. Would thank God for the, for the efforts of, uh, the media, especially, uh, Baba Kuiki, uh, Lady Kay. At our, so, so, talk on loryka, oh, toa naja, um, um, Abai Kiti. And so many people that some of us watch and just keep our hopes going. But I fita, daga, dabo, ma movement at the struggle. But if at all attack here, that gave us some confusion, eh, you know what? Ne, le waku, ni doe, eh, eh, and if this man, if we waste this man, there is the possibility that, that Yoruba Nation will never recover from it. That that will be the end of, 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 of our hopes. Ni mosheng baladwa, eh, oh, no, ni diaki, ba, kuka, modupe, eh, oh, no, eh. Uh, ede, eh, eh, bole, eh, boche, la ba, eh, kaka, timo, lakine, eh, 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 oh, man, fiti, oh, no. And you're long, Tony, eh, Mimi. You know, he has never, he has never exhausted himself, and has never counted anything of this earth, worthy of, uh, worthy of humanity. Uh, he believes that humanity is, is the essence of all things, he has done that, he has lived it. He's been tested now, he's proven. Eh, this is a real man, and a hero. The say, the Messiah of this time for the Yoruba Nation, and we cannot, we cannot let him go. So when this happened, you know, uh, ne, two years ago, when I can, eh, many, Benar Republic. It was a prayer, I, I prayed earlier that morning, and when I heard that news, I was, I was disturbed. The baladwa, eh, modukala, oh, no, eh, low knee, we have in my life. You know, if I knew what to, eh, eh, there's a season for all things.
Really the media, if not for you guys. The more you keep talking about it, the more this news is spread out, the more people get compared, the more the reality is known. And the fearful the politicians will be. A chef.
I shake on there, yeah, kind of what I saw the live cookie, Obama make me a one, maybe can. I buy like a cookie, I buy make way. Ah, Mama wa funke, yala de, ati lady K, eh, said to my mom, I wanna, I should be born. Ah, what do you call it, oh, Baba Moses, I be on the door, to move to the door, the door, the door, the door, the bank, boy. Muti, who are, messages in which man. Feel me, body, see all, he go to the bank discourse. And, um. He tell you video, you know what the record no, but I call, I look on you. In my myself way, and me to connect you are. And me to do look way, I wrote to let you walk by. Yawa funke yala de, eh, Emma, Murassile. But when you want him, you want to let me go, he key, in the other team, get in top, but we go back, not on, but me go, but I mean, I'm done, yeah, bro. Emma, come with them, be no repeat, there, repeat, there, me back at there, yeah, be back there, put you, question, you share there, keep moving, it's a dark. Let that to mo, let it mo, they, tapa de you, Baba, I could, Baba, yeah, eh, oh, boy, I'm called, Baba, Johnny, believe me, I'm the CSI. Eh, Moa calm down, yeah, during that, it move too bad, I'm gonna see what you see. Oh, boy, you won't, yeah, you know, my, yeah, Carlos, I'm on there, eh, Moa calm down, but he was so good. Wow, oh, no, you want to go, let it sort of program, and then I'm done, but, which, I want to do that, think, both voice, yeah, to me. Oh, no, yeah, yeah, oh, yawa funke yala de, but he been, well, they both. Me, oh, no, Emily, sorry, go, I don't know, just want, I mean, they mean, be no law, I don't, I go, we be the bow. Yeah, Baba, eh, and the rest is history, so, can do before long, we, eh, emit it, Baba, if you dial up more, in your joy. We have been one, we don't sorrow, see, my coma, would it be a make me, eh, Bush, you look at look money, to the boy, yeah. And while I'm fine, I had to sum on one day. And we're telling, we're like, it, eh, who, Baba, I don't sorrow to, two hundred and six years before the time. Me, I want to monitor, I want to monitor, before that as well, but do we, no. Come, I do, but we, it was joining me, kill a bama, so,阿拉con, he like, he diwa, eh, oh, my, she wa, me, but oh, yeah. Eh, who, who, bad, bad, or only, eh, who, who, Barry, but I'm pa, one might, if it's in there, ah. To bad yet, me, Baba, oh, no, you, you know, I'm there, kill it, Baba, my shit. I want to go for by, need to marry, yawa, funke, yala de, Mama, la, the barica. Eh, Baba, we all so key, he go, but I'm ready, he, what me go, eh, come, so, you don't know.
I shake on, Baba, me, then, she man, tell you, oh, God, me, oh, no, yeah, go, he, I shake, what do I say? Mo, key, yeah, you, Baba, I see, you, Mama, me, go, go, see, I, I, no, read, joke, I shake, did, 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 call me. Um, yeah, Coco, what you go for, long, and let you marry, so, Jack, yeah, me, so, show you me, what you call it, oh, Allah, guy, eh, be wa, ah. Prophet, so, look, blue, who, I tell familiar, funny, I shake, what do I, and you want it, eh. On, okay, me, call it, oh, no, no, me, only do, oh, me, only do, but, oh, Timo, we are, no, but. Need to repay, Muti, man, Bonnie, Paul, or your, your, banish, man, go, go, but I want to be there, okay, man, so, wait, I know, my, Baba, she. Tell him, my, Baba, she, she, but, oh, you, July, first, me, only, back there, still, the, the, Jack, yeah, they, me, oh, my, come on, so, on, eh, kill, I see you too. You must share, there, I see, me, be, me, yeah, be, must share, there, love, pressure, me, no, so, can. Me, oh, Baba, she, I thought, John, you're by, be, must share, that, I, from, your, your, banish, and not going back, me, she, like, Google, me, come, what, I, see, no, she, beg, oh. Okay, in your love, eh. Because, oh, wow, more, logic, me, been a republic, Emma, we pay. Eh, 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 big, me, only, where, I, we, be, me, no, less, love, pressure, me, no, so, can, oh, she, come. Most, Allah, would, you, that, can, roll, like, most, when I, cannot, to, Jack, pay, ah, ah, she, but, do, I follow. God, you're in, Lumi, I was so close, mommy, one, my, ah, only, can you, go, they, me, I, so, no, yeah, dim, oh, she, but, more, I'm so, for, eh, oh, Richard, Lumi. Oh, we'll not connect, more, oh, no, yeah, Sunday, oh, my, day, yeah, more, what, that, you, but, tell me, yeah, I, you, that, you, long, say, me, Syria, Julie. Need to repay, and it's, oh, no, I'm back, fair, oh, no, yeah, and it's, oh, oh, no, oh, we'll not fair, what you can, to repay, oh, no, I'm coming, more. So, more, that, I, from, my, yeah, Julie. What you can, most, go, for, long, Baba, more, I say, call me, for, no, yeah, eh, I, she, pull, the, wa. Oh, see, wa, need, see, eh, oh, yeah, I, my, we. He, but, he, sugar, go, see, wa, oh, 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 oh.
Man, he told you, wa. Oh, Baba, oh, no, eh, ati, wa, tabi, eh, see, tabi, eh, see, wa. I for, eh, oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Oh, Baba, oh, no, eh, I do, eh, oh, no, eh. My, wa, fair, eh, they, eh, me, Christie.
Baby, you say, baby, you say, never, I can, you, I, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Father, so, oh, eh, how I do.
I shake, what do I say, tell familiar, yeah, my best sister.
I shake, yawa, yah, la, gee, see, it, no, we go, America, be a bank, boy. Yala, gee, yala, gee, oh, yala, gee, no, me, eh, go, eh, eh, go, da, I go, yeah, go, eh.
Yeah, to one that is not in corner Nigeria, those our leaders, they understand it clearly. After you tell about for senior look who they're fair, Paris in way to be sorry, it's a bad decision way. So the issue is more well look, because it is clear, okay, to fail logo, but he need, okay, hello, what do you? Can you yoda, what you gonna find a logo, so you know, Tony, can you yoda, what type of money, can you yoda, can you come out? I want to want sad with one sorrow, he beg what I know, I see my, only you know, only it is just only on paper. Only it is still far from being united, that Nigeria is still far from being united. Nigeria unity is only a British intention for this country. He said it, Otto saw again in nineteen seventy four, October, also, he only since nineteen fourteen. The British government have been trying to make Nigeria as one country, only but Nigeria themselves are geographically different in their background, religion, belief and custom. And do not show themselves any sign of willing to unite or unite. Only is only a British intention of this country. So what are we talking about? So by the time I was to what did that da, hello, she what the what the Nigeria unity is completely fake. See, any a poopa da, hello, she what did that da, been to one Jafun, on to one ma, neck better than it. Somebody believe it be, but when in Nigeria, she get, eh, ma, no let's see, maybe, I'm sorry, be world media. I want to jump your body, son, one, he says, and he gonna be your, your body, son, all in Jafun. I want come out, you have one to see, Leo, why the my phone, you know, one thousand. So man, he me, bubba, I probably tell you, in that Jafun, he pay, and he carry but not, oh, see, la ya, ti jo, oroty. My concern, oh, see, but what's Nigeria, oh, no, oh, no, Rebecca. He said in one of his statements, only, oh, we turn it, I click, bubba, I buy it. Oh, no, Rebecca, and in me, in Nigeria, that is, he like, you're a bar. Only where you are, to, oh, written one, that, but you want, believe, you know, that way, oh, no, oh, to the one. Oh, one, collect as a British parliament, be, only, pain, on my town, I live back, lately, come, come, wanna be, we pay. Let us, let us give them the English language, that's so that they will see English language as is better than their own language, let us change their culture, let us change their belief, change their religion. Then what is happening today, they change our culture, our religion and everything. Ni bo le, you wa, ni ba ti, yada dra, to abolish history throughout the institution Nigeria, because they don't want our children to move their way back, their background, but still, I do see my, I do see long wa. So, and to my sort of, I want to one be, at a year, your body, world media and the home base media. We take a lot of our time for the research. Lately, my bacon, in time, Jafun, to we were in, by, nanny, he be like, really, he, the battle, he really, me, to be military. At diallo, that's him, I'm where you are, and he made you, and he met her, to move, to move, why he is mad, I for you. Tavaa, bye, tavaa, bye, I'm a do, be low, oh, sorrow, I be last, eh, I, I will, oh, sorrow, tavaa, bye, the wa, oh, no, so, oh, to see, we, yeah, can't. See, my, my team, so, Pama, to now, so, Tiana, he pay, Nigeria is just a mere British intention. He shake me, I will, I could, I would, just, I para, I could.
I don't have a feeling. So my, our mother so I'm a two left together. Everybody know I agree program knows if you go while I want that. So two left together they won't say I will I'm going to bring they'll bring up today. Actually, you know, it's a little more.
I'm just a bad guy, I see all the human.
Actually, actually Dr. Zadi. Even my mother in concert, they make blue love. My mother, my mother in finger. Oh yeah, motive, motive, we need to move it back to give, motive, come be by you. Oh yeah, oh yeah, queen next person. So you're one, one, uh yeah, on me, girl, I need to be. But to my fashion, individual is individual.
All that I found on the, on the program, Lenny. No, that I play me, me, really, you can, you know, I want me, girl, I need to go on the.
On top of that, she's individual, she's individual, only for all of you.
Papa, what look, blue, blue, I'm gone. Ah, sorry, Papa, uh, pastor, okay, Bjorn, sorry.
Shout to all of you.
Shout what for, do I share?
Oh, yeah, yeah, one, yeah, you told you want to be, she's a girl, I know. Okay, you tell me.
Mommy, why you, 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 what to him? Ever were on mute.
Uh, more people go late, conce, a pusher, tap on tap on. Oh, long, long, I did, did. Give all that. Monday. More people go, what a, what a, um, along, if you back on, 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 if you want to live. Uh, on behalf of all ye ye in Yoruba land. Um, who is carry, but I go to my feeling, go conceal. So I'm a from about one hundred thousand for now. So when you carry, but I can't see, I share for now.
Actually, gone, you, actually, gone.
Yeah, 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 but no, no, one in no group, so I'm a ye ye, you come back. But I get coffee, you see, for now.
It can be more than that, but also, Kondo, and missing, yes?
Um, okay, actually, I'm a get back, see, I see more to question.
Who's the problem, actually, gone?
Yes, um.
Uh, sister, me, Yala J. Ever so, for me, repeat at your door, can you, uh, you got.
Oh, much individual, oh, much individual. Much individual, let me worry.
Yeah, yeah, more way you, Yala J.
I could, I could share, I could share, ma, mega rally, actually, ma.
You like, yeah, Yala J, I go, okay, you need call me more, for me, for me, girl, I know. Thank God, Asha. I did joke, sister, what they joke, can call. Ever I go, okay, sister, they joke, oh, more, ba. I build, I build on grace. Ever I go, okay.
I shared it for Dr. Fabi, most people who are what's our, our, we, it's on, it's a, a pusher, tap, you know, by our media. Okay, I feel, a pusher, tap, tap, tap.